Okay, to start this meeting again, we were having a discussion of all things the arboretum.
I've been asked to address the public. We had an executive session. The executive session was to discuss real estate matters and discuss legal advice and possible litigation. And I gave a report, and I have been directed by counsel to share briefly a small summary of my report to you, the public. We're going to entertain about five or 10 minutes of public comment on this particular topic. If there are folks that are here on some other issue, we'll certainly get to that. But when it comes to the arboretum, I have given my formal opinion to them verbally that I believe that the Downington Borough case is applicable. I believe that the Donated and Dedicated Property Act does apply to our situation. I understand there are those that have differing opinions. I've researched it extensively. I've listened to all the input. And I believe since it applies, that we would have to seek court approval in order to try to sell it to the highest bidder. I've said that because we would have to make the allegation in the petition that it is impractical or impossible to continue it as an arboretum, that I've told my client that I think I don't, I have real doubts if we can in good faith make that statement. And so therefore, rather than having counsel spend a lot of money on me as a lawyer, I think they've got better things to spend money on. I don't think we will prevail. I think the courts would rule that we can't meet the tests. They think a court would rule that the Downington Borough case does apply to us, that the Act applies to us. And thus, I am essentially saying that to try to proceed with the bidding of the property would be illegal. And that's my opinion. I'm sure there are those that differ with me. There's perhaps other alternatives that can be done that doesn't particularly involve But I'm sure my news is going to be treated with scorn and ridicule by some people. Some folks may like it, but I wasn't trying to make anyone happy or sad. I was just giving the best opinion I was capable of. And again, I'm not infallible. I could be wrong, but that is my honest legal opinion. And I've been doing this for a while. So with that, anyone that would like to be heard on the issue? Yes, Mr. Plummer.
I would like to be heard on the issue. It would surprise no one that I disagree with your analysis. And I think there's another alternative. And the alternative that I would propose is since the Borough is the only entity, the only party who can bring the action, no other entity or person has standing to bring the action to avoid the implications of Downington. My proposal is this, that rather than concede the applicability of Downington and then try to avoid the implications of Downington, that the Borough authorize me at Mr. Bajat's expense file a declaratory judgment action in the Court of Common Pleas of Potter County, seeking a declaration that the, that this property has not been dedicated in accordance with, as required by Pennsylvania law. As you recall from the last session, I did not have an opportunity to reply to your statements because of the way that meeting, the last month's meeting was structured. If it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, looks like a duck, it's a duck, is not the law of this Commonwealth. The law of this Commonwealth is that dedication is a matter of contract. Contract requires offer and acceptance. I don't believe that's happened. I think your analogy to the law of adverse possession fails on two counts. First, the arboretum did not, has not utilized the property in excess of 21 years. And second, any use the arboretum has made of that property has been by permission rather than adverse. And it is the law of this Commonwealth that use by permission can never ripen into adverse possession. So there is, I don't think anyone knows whether this property has been dedicated or not until Judge Minor writes an opinion. And that opinion will say one of two things. The property has been dedicated, the property has not been dedicated. At that point, we know whether we can go forward. The Borough will incur no expense in connection with that litigation. Mr. Bajat will, will absorb the entire cost of that litigation and will know once and for all.
I agree in part and disagree in part. And I'm not going to get into a protracted, technical, legal discussion with a learned member of the bar in a public setting. I agree that the declaration, seeking a declaration from the court under the applicable law is feasible. I don't think it will be successful, but I do acknowledge that I think the declaratory judgment action is an avenue that could be pursued. And I also agree that it would provide through goodness knows how long of a prolonged legal process, it would provide an answer. I'm not particularly in favor of it, but I don't, I wasn't elected. Counsel gets to vote how it does, that almost everything else you said I disagree with. And I won't go through it item by item.
I would-
Is anyone else? You'll get, we'll get back to you. We'll get back to you. Mr. Wagner.
I totally disagree with Mr. Plummer. I wonder which Downingtown he was reading. He did describe a paragraph, paragraph, or page three, paragraph four of his letter. He described dedication of real property under the Public Trust doctrine. Real property may be dedicated to public use in a variety of ways. It may be expressed or implied, may be found in a single act such as the giving of a deed or the recording of a plan or in a series of acts, actions. In 2005, the Cowersport Borough Council with the Cowersport Chamber of Commerce declared they were building an arboretum. The Borough Council, the Chamber of Commerce, a joint venture, they said where it was going to be, they made plans for the utilities, and all the pathways were made and the layout. It was signed by Borough Manager Marlon Moore, Chamber of Commerce President Mike Harris. I don't think Mr. Moore was working behind the backs of the Borough Council since he answered to them. George Haltz, I believe, was the president of the council at the time. That was a dedication, an express dedication. Then on October 15th, 2005, the Arboretum Committee had another dedication. This was not the original dedication that I mentioned, but on October 15th, 2005, the arboretum was formally accepted in an onsite ceremony, main speaker with Potter County Commissioner Doug Morley. It was held on the arboretum property. A large sign was later placed at the corner of Chestnut Street and Route 6 after the dedication of the park. Many electricians and other people dedicated their services to preparing the arboretum. In addition to this, there have been many dedications of work, time, fundraising, event planning, honoring of memories of loved ones by placing memorials in the arboretum. The arboretum has been beautiful this spring and summer. The flocks were followed by flowering crabs too. I don't know how we can say somebody can come in here and because they want a piece of property, they'll ask the court to condemn it. I think the law is pretty plain that if it's maintained and beautiful and that they can't sell it.
Dr. Wagner, we have your letter. It's been considered. We're trying to keep this true.
Yes, but you previously, at previous times, read Mr. Plummer's letter or described his letter in detail. You did not describe my letter.
Well, since I said what I said, I didn't think you were going to be in horrible opposition.
Well, Mr. Plummer then spoke up and once again said it has never been dedicated, never been accepted. That's so obviously false that-
Would you care to sum up, would you, please?
Yes. I think you've already decided that you're not going to, or the council is not going to advertise it and try to get a buyer before they find out whether it's legal to do so.
I've simply given my advice. I've had lots of clients not follow my advice. So when we get done with this, we're going to move on with the meeting. And I will learn what you learn, what council does or does not do. I do not, I have not tried to report, to claim what council is going to do. I've simply announced in a public way my legal opinion. Be it right or wrong, it is my opinion.
Well, if they proceed to try to bid and accept an offer, there will be an injunction filed, and it will be taken to the Orphans Court.
I presume that's, anyone else that has not already spoken? Go ahead.
Being, I just, I don't know much about it other than what I read in the paper. And I wanted to come tonight to see what was really going on. And I just have a simple question, and it's probably, you can tell me what, but if there's a, if you have this piece of property and the Borough owns it, even if it was under that Act that you said it was, but you had another site and Borough was willing to move it, and it was an acceptable site to, to the majority of the council and even the town people let them vote on it or whatever, I don't know, but, and they were going to receive money for that lot and get another lot with no cost incurred. I mean, I guess I'm just not getting it as one of the biggest taxpayers in this town. I, I explain that to you, would you please?
That's a good question. It seems that the law of Pennsylvania, in my opinion, is that once it becomes a park, the only way you can then sell it, transfer it to a third party whatsoever, if it's for private enterprise purposes, is with the approval of the Orphans Court.
Which is what, the Orphans Court? I don't understand.
It would be Judge Minor. We're a small county, so you've got one judge. There, you've got Criminal Court, you've got Civil Court, you've got Probate Court, you've got Orphans Court, you've got Court after Court. Here, Judge Minor has the good time of getting to hear everything. And what a job, he's doing a great job, and it's a tough, tough job. He's got to deal with, I mean, other counties, they've got masters to hear divorce issues and all sorts of other stuff. It's amazing what he and before him, Judge Lee, do. In any event, it just, they make up, the state legislature makes up the law, the courts interpret the law, and then the rest of us try to live with it. And it won't, there, I can name you at least 20 laws that I don't agree with from a personal point of view, but it's law and I follow it. And so from my point of view, regardless of what a good idea it may or may not be, if it's illegal, if you can't do it, then you can't do it. And in this case, I think you have to go to Orphans Court to petition to be allowed to sell it, or I will acknowledge a declaratory judgment action could be filed, saying, we got a question here and we're not quite sure what to do with it. Judge, tell us. I don't think there's any real likelihood that the judge is going to say it's not a park and that it has not been dedicated. And basically, if you read that full opinion, there's a real interesting sentence or paragraph in there, and it's long and it's complicated. But the court took up and threw out a little phrase, and it sort of tried to explain what it didn't want to see. It didn't want to see a situation where parks are for sale for cash, that there's something more important than just the almighty dollar. And that basically, that the thing that's driving it is once it becomes a park, that that's no longer held as just regular borough property. It's held by the Borough Council in the position as a trustee. And it's in trust for the public, and in trust for the public for park uses. And if you want to fiddle with that at all, to make sure that all this beautiful parkland doesn't just get sold out to the highest bidder, wake up one day and there are no parks around, that you got to go to court. And the court is going, and the court really gets to, and usually a court is just reviewing whether there's a good reason to support the administrative decision, the decision by the Borough Council. In this instance, in my reading of the case, Judge Minor would get to make his own decision. He's not simply saying whether we had a basis, whether it made any sense at all, but he would be the one that would determine all those issues. And I think the odds of him saying that this land has not been dedicated for park usage is pretty slim. I can't completely rule it out. I've been surprised before. And so the answer to that is, I think I've answered it, is just that it seems to be the law.
Is there a similar example in the use of Mitchell Park? And Mitchell Park was dedicated, was it not? And now a portion of it's being used for the library, is that right?
I, I think those situations are somewhat distinguishable, but I agree there's an analogy there. In fact, there's some argument that there's a stronger situation with respect to Mitchell Park, because in Mitchell Park's instance, in the deed, there was actually language which was to, and I can't quote it to you, but there was language saying that it was to be used for park purposes. Now, when you look through all of the park purposes, museums, libraries, walking tours, there's other things, I think, I think we can very nicely justify using a portion of Mitchell Park for library purposes. But that's not really the issue today. It may be the issue next week or a year from now, but I do think that the Act in the Downington case applies to Mitchell Park just as well as I think it applies to the situation with the arboretum.
So the Borough doesn't actually have to sell the property to a separate entity for it to be a dedicated use? Once they start using for their property for whatever purpose, they're locked into that and-
That's my reading, because of the way they say implied. To me, the word implied and the way, if you read that case, you'll see a tremendous history and how it took five days of hearings in front of that trial judge, went up on appeal, the Commonwealth Court reversed, they had another three days of hearing, they did a whole bunch of evaluation, then it went back up to the Commonwealth Court, they considered it en banc, which means all the judges got to hear it as opposed to just three. And then that got appealed to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court unanimously reversed the Commonwealth Court, and basically ended up going with the original decision, more or less of the trial judge, and said the Act applies and no, you can't do it.
It would seem to be in the best, excuse me for interrupting, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
It would seem to be in the best interest of the council as well as those who are in attendance, whether they're for it or against it, to hear from the Court of Common Pleas though, as to whether or not what you're saying is accurate and everybody's argument is gay or nay. I mean, it would seem to resolve the issue because this seems to keep going on, and it's also a concern to those who are trying to advocate business, that it may impact other things that are done in the future.
Well, everything, everything's going to be looked at in its own factual context. So I don't really want to get into a broad pronouncement about every spot. But if council wants to proceed with a declaratory judgment action, I could live with that, but I think it's still keeping an issue up in the air for no good reason, because I don't think that there's a very good likelihood that Judge Minor is going to-
If, if nothing else, that would affirm your opinion. If it doesn't affirm your opinion, it gives the council the opportunity to, to make a decision with-
And that's why I, that's why I did not voice any substantial hostility to that viewpoint. But again, these are elected, and again, some of the thing is, this thing has been going on for many, many months to years. At some point, we need to just turn the page one way or another and move on with life. Go ahead, Mr. Plummer. I think it's time to hear from you again.
Good, thank you. You have your opinion as to whether, whether or not it's been dedicated. I have my opinion. We have different opinions. Nobody's going to know who is right until Judge Minor tells us that one of us is right and the other one is wrong.
Would you agree with me that that could easily be appealed? And the appellate court of the Commonwealth Court could then have a, whatever court could have a different opinion, and that can be appealed, and the Supreme Court could hear it?
And we could, and we could seek cert to the Supreme Court of the United States, but that's pretty unlikely.
Yeah, but my, my point is, it may not be as simple as just an opinion from Judge Minor.
Well, it, I would, in, in response to that, I would say, what is the Borough's downside? If that litigation drags on for, you know, to appeal to the Superior Court or the Commonwealth Court or even the state Supreme Court? Under, under the proposal that I've made, the Borough has absolutely no financial exposure at all. All, all that we ask is that the Borough allow, allow me to prosecute the litigation at Mr. Bajat's expense to its conclusion. And whether that, whether Judge Minor, as you well know, whether Judge Minor's opinion is the last word, last and final word in this case or not, depends very much on the words and the legal reasoning which he incorporates into his opinion. I would not, I would certainly not advise taking an appeal if I believe that the judge's decision is well reasoned. If the judge's, if an appeal is taken to the Superior Court, and whether or not the Superior Court's decision is well reasoned or not, the, the odds of getting alacottered from the Pennsylvania Supreme Court are between slim and none. And the expense at that point is, if I were the appealing party, the expense at that point would be prohibitive, and I would so advise my client that his money is not well spent to go forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has not yet spoken that would like to be heard? Yes, you're back.
Private individuals, as far as I know, can do whatever they want. You know, if you want to hire him to, to proceed, I don't think there's any law against that.
It's, it's, it's a question of standing, which as-
Standing?
Yeah, it's a question, an issue as, which Mr. Glassmire addressed.
You and I understand, and I don't think we need to-
No, I don't think-
I think, you know, it has, the only way to bring the declaratory judgment action is to bring it in the name of the Borough.
I understand. You and I understand. I just don't think that the citizens are standing or what we're here for.
I, I agree.
Mr. Wagner, Dr. Wagner.
I would think that appointing Mr. Plummer as, as to do your job stinks. I think if it's going to be taken forward, you represent the Borough. You don't need to give it over to a guy who knows exactly what he wants and is going to work his best to get it.
As a taxidermist, I'd rather see the Borough let somebody else put the bill.
Does anyone else have any more comment? Hearing none, the, does anyone else want to be, okay, go ahead, last.
I think that this whole thing, as you said, has gone on too long. That it's going to happen, just splitting the Borough up right now, right? You've got so many people on one side of the issue, the council, so many on the other. You've got people in town for one thing, people in town for another. It may come down to a three-three vote thing, you've got the mayor in the middle of it. I have to agree that I think it's time, as you said earlier, call it quits. I don't know, that's just my opinion. Not, not because I'm on the Arboretum Committee. I'm just, I've been for two and a half years, and I felt the same way even before. Do it, whatever you want to do, to get it done with.
That would be the honorable thing, since they were verbally told that they could use the arboretum for as long as they wanted to. That would be the honorable thing to do.
Now, we're going to cut off discussion on the arboretum. Does anyone on council, in view of all this rather enlightened discussion, and I mean that sincerely, does anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. President? I'd like, after reviewing all the information we've had on this, I'd like to make a motion that we do not sell the arboretum law.
Is there a second?
Only for a second?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
All right. Now, is there anyone in the public that's here to talk on another issue?
May, and I came last month with math and a deed of the, the land that the sewage plant is on. And I was corrected, and last month, we said, or you said, while Mr. Senich was here, that you understand that the deed was for 194, 294 was for the sewage plant property. And I looked up that deed, and it appears to be a mistake. It appears that that 194, 294 deed is for the property the, the water tower is on. So I guess I'm, I'm here to ask the Borough Council to clear that up, and to-
We're working on that.
Okay.
And I, I will, I was gone for a week, and I, my schedule has been fairly crazy, and I have not yet advised council on my understanding of the deeds. I was not telling you that you were right or wrong, I was just making sure you were aware that there were potentially more than one deed that needed to be looked at. I myself have not arrived at a final conclusion.
Okay.
So council is waiting for me to advise them on an interpretation of these deeds and the meaning of it all. And I'm not going, I'm not prepared to do that at this time.
Okay.
This arboretum thing has taken up a moment or two of my time.
I have the math, if anybody cares to look at it and the deed.
That would really serve me better if you would make an appointment at my office.
Okay.
And I'd love to hear what you have to say, and I can, I'm all ears.
Okay.
I like people to educate me.
Okay.
Well, she's saying that she thinks perhaps the deed in the Borough is applied. And if that's true, that's something we should be advised of. I mean, if she's right, which I don't know that she is, then I think we need to look at a lot of things, but there's, there's two or three deeds, and the deed doesn't care for what one is. If it is, if it's like I think it is, the deed that controls, the deed in the authority, then it's really out of our hands. Anyone else have any other issues?
Just a question. The vote was forwarded to, is that correct?
Yes.
On the arboretum question?
Yes.
For the do, or the do not?
Not sell.
Not sell.
Not sell.
Thank you.
We could not hear.
We could not hear.
They didn't say it. That's why you didn't hear it. They didn't say what the vote was after it was declared.
But we could not hear what the vote was.
Well, it was taken roll call vote. Just to clarify that, it was forwarded to, forwarded to in favor of the motion. And the motion was to not sell. Sorry if that wasn't clear enough. I think you proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Anyone else have anything to bring this up? If not, we had a vote, we had a plan. The approval of the minutes, did everybody present? The minutes said, present any corrections or objections? Not just staying through. The approval of the law for this.
That includes the one that I signed, very keen.
Motion to adjourn without further notice?
Motion made, second, to approve the best of the minutes. Especially the eighteenth one.
Three dollars.
Oh, Ben, oh boy. We discussed that.
We received one quote for anti-skid, or 400 ton of anti-skid from I.A. Construction, the amount of $20.50 per ton. That is up a quarter from last year, which is about $100.
Entertaining motion to approve that for fifty percent.
I'll make that motion.
Give a second. Okay. Throw phone warning.
Yes.
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 The caboose restoration.
Wait, I can't hear.
Yeah, the caboose restoration. I have been in contact with Dave Costano at the Historical Society, trying to figure out who actually owns the caboose, which is kind of a moot point, because the Historical Society would like to repair, finance any repairs needed for the caboose at this time, and they will make sure it's repaired.
I would ask that since we know that the Chamber of Commerce owns the caboose, that they ensure the caboose? And that they have given permission to the Historical Society to touch their property?
I'd like to say, I don't think the Chamber knows they own it.
Well, that's why Dave grabbed me some information. I haven't discussed it with the Chamber.
Maybe the Chamber will sell it to the Historical Society, which would make sense.
Which would be great.